Even if disclosure might be deferred in the interest of a public purse, we are in public service and the public is paying for what we do. They should know what we are doing with their money. To this end, I propose four specific policies in this motion to confirm our openness. Firstly, you may think that we are already committed to consult councillors and the public before making important decisions. But this motion merely seeks to confirm this policy. We've heard tonight about three recent examples where the public think that we have not engaged with them before the council has decided on a course of action. And I have to say, I certainly knew nothing about the decision to sell the River Park site before the University of Southampton started briefing me on their plans for that site. So I believe we need to restate our commitment to this openness. Next, the Claire Lloyd Jones report following the Silver Hill judicial review told the council to re-establish trust with the community. This included specific comments about how information in committee papers and in private meetings was never made public, even though with the passing of time, the content of the papers and discussions at the meetings would no longer qualify as exempt. My proposal at the time to routinely open up exempt papers to public inspection was accepted by both political groups, but has not yet been implemented. This motion seeks to implement that proposal so that the basis for the council's decision-making can be properly understood by anyone who wishes to, once the commercial sensitivity no longer exists. Similarly, meetings on important but sensitive matters with organisations outside the city council need to be properly recorded. After decisions have been made and commercial sensitivities resolved, the records of these meetings need to be made public. Else, whose interests are we acting in? As an example, if officers and/or councillors are meeting their opposite numbers from neighbouring authorities to discuss options for, say, new housing developments, why would we want to keep any subsequent agreement secret from our own councillors and residents? And finally, this motion seeks to stop the use of non-disclosure agreements to restrict elected councillors from seeing documents that contain information relating to decisions that are being made by the council. Legislation already exists that prohibits councillors from disclosing information in documents identified as being restricted. Demanding that councillors sign a non-disclosure agreement, particularly if it includes a clause that seeks to indemnify the council from any consequential loss or damage, is wholly unnecessary and heavy-handed. Please join me in applying the Agnes test and affirm our openness and transparency as a council by supporting this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Godfrey. Members, we now have up to 20 minutes and I'm going to stick to that for this debate on the motion. councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During the course of my life, I was 40 years a teacher, as a number of you know. As a teacher, I frequently handled confidential information because I was a househead, which involved a lot of counselling. In the 1970s, I became the chairman of an examination board and CSE at that time, and then later, when the GCSE started, I was a senior examiner there. For both of those posts, I was expected and asked to sign the Official Secrets Act. When I joined the council in 2002, 20 years ago now, my goodness, one forgets how time flies by, I became very, very familiar with exempt papers. To the best of my knowledge, I never broke any confidence as a result of what I learnt in council if I was asked to keep that confidentiality. And I carried through that as a member of committees or indeed when I was very briefly leader of this council. As our present leader is very aware, she hears things that are not for general circulation and that is perhaps the way it should be. With that background, I was absolutely staggered that someone on this council, whether it be a member or a group of members or officer or a group of officers I know not, to ask me to sign an NDA. It's the first time in my life, which is a pretty long one now, that I've ever been asked to sign a document of confidentiality of that sort. I never actually saw the document, but I was simply asked to sign it. It's a rather odd way of going about business because it implies that I and perhaps other members of the council are inherently dishonest, that they are going to break a confidence. And yet, I always thought, as an elected member of this House, of the council, that confidentiality was implicit, not just as a result of data protection, but also confidentiality that one learns from residents from time to time. I'm not going to start speaking to the press or indeed often other members of council about some of that confidentiality because it was given to me in confidence. And the assumption is these exempt papers are exactly the same situation. So to say I was a tad upset about this implication that I could not be trusted without any sort of background or reasoning for that statement, quite frankly, I found insulting. I should ask for an apology from whoever made that decision. I'm not going to. But the reason for me supporting this motion is simply that. I'm not asking for exempt papers to publicise, they're confidential and so they should be, certainly all the ones that I've seen in the 20 years I've been in council. Same with examination papers that I saw as an examiner. It was not my job, not my business to start then publishing those examination papers before the children and perhaps some of you in this House sat down to answer those questions that I was involved in setting. Now, how unfair, how unreasonably it would have been if I was going to start breaking that sort of confidence. Exactly the same thing implies with these exempt papers. There, I fully accept that some of these documents should be confidential. I accept that, I've got no quarrel with that. But I do have quarrel with someone implying that I'm going to start speaking right, left and centre about this when there's no evidence that I am going to do that. Just by implication, being asked for that document, to sign that document, is just frankly disgusting. So I support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Councillor Lehman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too find it extremely insulting to have to sign an NDA agreement for an organisation that I'm part of. The only time that I've ever been asked to do that is when I've been asked to sign the Official Secrets Act on several occasions, working for the government. I really don't understand why you need to do that. You only sign NDA agreements with third parties when they're giving you particularly sensitive information. And I think it really is quite something when council officials are saying to councillors that we don't trust you.
Thank you, councillor Lehman. Councillor Gemmell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In my role as group manager for the Conservative Party within this council, I have often been responsible for grabbing our new councillors before they get to meetings, before they get to anything. We have a wonderful set of induction, which becomes quite intense, and I'm sure you'll all agree that coming to this forum from the world of business, it is a completely different, novel experience. I've often referred to it as joining a senior school for the first time. You're a week later than everybody else. You've arrived on day one and you're late and you're running, pigtails flying, satchel going that way, nobody's giving you a timetable, you don't know what language they're speaking and wow, this is council. And so I grab our new councillors and try and say, you know, first of all, code of conduct, you can't do anything to done your code of conduct, the code of conduct may be a month down the line by the time they've got, or there is all this other information that is hitting them. But I've always said that whatever you do, act with honour. Before you open your mouth anywhere or say anything, just think, act with honour. And I would hope that that applies to every member here of the council and officers as well. It is something, you are in a position of privilege to actually be able to serve your community, whether it's in a paid format or otherwise, but it is something that you should be able to take and people should be able to take for granted that that's why you do it. I have not come across, well, I really, I haven't come across anyone that I could actually say hasn't tried to do this with the best of intentions. Going forward to the exempt papers situation, it is more difficult now that we don't have the printed paper because everybody knew, the new ones obviously won't know it because we get it digitally, but everybody knew you got pink papers, completely taken away from any other white paper. When it came to being recycled, we had special bins for them, or if you were like me, you lit the fire with them. They had to be destroyed, they were not for public consumption. It is more difficult when you have something digitally and 40 pages in, there's the heading that says exempt, or that you could, I can understand that that can be missed, but it is, it is still never anything that anyone would release with or should release with intention. And I do not believe that when you've come here and gone through your own vetting in your own parties and even were you to be an independent, to have got this support in the community, you would not be able to do that if you weren't acting with honour. So I think this is what one of my lecturers would have just put STBO on, stating the bleeding obvious, but sometimes you have to state the bleeding obvious. And for that reason, I will support this motion wholeheartedly.
Thank you, councillor Gemmell. Councillor Cutler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little bit confused by this motion and certainly confused by some of the responses so far because it seems to be mainly about conservative councillors being upset, they've been asked to be confidential and where actually the initial part of the motion was about transparency. And the implication from councillor Godfrey is that we're not transparent enough. And I think we would all say, agree that we've got further to go on transparency. But this administration has done more for transparency of this council than any previous administration. We have introduced streamed meetings so that people can see all the recordings. We've had far more member briefings and open forums than any other administration. We've won prizes for consultation with the public. So we are moving forward on transparency, but there are some very specifics here in this that give me some cause for concern, particularly the need to take notes with every outside meeting. I don't think councillor Godfrey's thought this through, that every parish council you go to, you need to take contemporaneous notes of everything you've said at it, every meeting with a resident. So I would like to propose an amendment to this, that this motion is referred to the Audit and Governance Committee to look at legality of some of these proposals, to look at the practical and resource implications to some aspects of these proposals. So that's my amendment to refer to Audit and Governance. On the question of exempt papers, I recognise that it was as far back as the Claire Lloyd Jones report that we talked about reviewing exempt papers. The particular proposal here to bring them back to council, I think is probably too ponderous. But I'm assured by Mrs Kirkman that the process within, from an officer's side, is in place, it just hasn't been able to be implemented during the pandemic and will certainly go forward with that. But I'd like to propose that amendment, Madam Mayor.
Do you have a second, councillor Cutler?
Yes, seconded, Madam Mayor, and reserve my rights to speak.
Thank you. Members, we now have a 20-minute debate on that amendment. Can I see indication who would like to speak? Councillor Power, I can see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is so much I don't understand in this motion that I welcome the proposed amendment. If there is work we can do to improve transparency of the council, very happy to look at Audit and Governance and find out what we can actually achieve, what will be deliverable and how we could do it to work this through. So I welcome the amendment and we'll be supporting it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other members? Councillor Hall.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the proposed amendment. And I think it's rather concerning that we as a council are actually challenging for quite simple requests here in the motion this evening and why the administration are opposed to that. Surely, we all believe that we should consult with other councillors and our public before making important decisions. We've talked about that at significant times in the debate this evening. Surely, we should support the Claire Lloyd Jones recommendation. It was agreed, it just hasn't been implemented. And I think I've just heard from the monitoring officer, it is possible to implement that. Why would that be a problem? NDAs with extremely onerous indemnifying clauses, I think we're all agreed, is not appropriate for this council. And in fact, we're not all being treated equally because the answer to question seven of the councillors' questions tonight tells us that the Cabinet didn't have to sign them, it was just the rest of us who couldn't be trusted. And so surely, surely, we all should be treated equally and that level of agreement is actually not appropriate for this place and that we are all signed up to particular behaviours as councillors. And then finally, it is clear that there are meetings taking place that do impact us as a council and as a district and that with officers or members that do have implications for us. And therefore, those details of those meetings are important. One example is of course the partnership for South Hampshire, where we're discussing housing numbers with them, but nobody in this chamber is able to understand or see what is being said on our behalf. So, Madam Mayor, I put to the chamber that it's a perfectly reasonable motion for things that I thought we would all absolutely embrace because we are open and transparent and want to be seen to be sensible, honest and honourable to the public who select us, who elect us. We accept entirely the opportunity, maybe different if there's something that's particularly commercially sensitive and personally sensitive, and therefore we have to manage that information appropriately, but the expectation should be in favour of disclosure. And the day that we're seen to be hiding and squirreling things away and the council actually questioning that, I think is a very sad day for this council. So I would urge the chamber this evening to actually put that amendment to one side, to accept the four elements and work collectively to make sure that they can be implemented effectively for this council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Councillor Ernie.
Mayor. Clearly, as a portfolio holder, I regularly meet partners such as Beacon and Citizens Advice. And as things stand, both sides are able to have frank and sensitive discussions on issues which aren't always commercial or refer to private issues which will be covered by GDPR and personal data, but they are still sensitive. And it is important for those organisations that if they talk to me about it, then that can be a free discussion on the basis of confidentiality. And that often means not even going to other members of Cabinet, let alone keeping a note of everything and having all members of the council read it. And I think, but one, I think that this provision is probably meant to apply to those kind of meetings. I think we need to remember that all councillors have meetings all the time. I receive submissions on matters under discussion, you know, particularly planning, highways, whatever, in the shops, on the buses, you know, sometimes you won't be surprised to hear in the pub. And while on occasion, if it's proper casework, I might make a note of that, on the whole I don't. And where I do make a note, it will just be a quick note on my phone. Councillor Pearson says confidentiality is essential, but he will have to record all his meetings with outside persons and allow other members of the council to see them and take the decision on whether they are confidential. We're already at 20 to 1 tonight. I can imagine that where sensitive matters are under debate and we're debating every council whether they're kept confidential for another 12 months, we're looking at breakfast meetings. So this particular provision, I think, doesn't make any sense. It also creates a massive level of bureaucracy, a massive level of expense and just isn't a practical provision. A recent example would be that a lady who needed a different door because she had suffered from domestic abuse. Now, clearly, that would fall under the confidentiality provisions. But do I have to bring that back to council so that you all hear about it to decide whether it's confidential? No, but that's the kind of judgements that we need to make all the time and for ourselves. You know, I have signed NDAs with other organisations and I had absolutely no issue about doing that. I think it's just a belt and braces approach which makes it very clear that some of the items that you're discussing are very confidential. It's not like the official secrets, you're not going to go to jail if you break it. So I think that's rather over-exaggerated in terms of its significance. However, I agree that that doesn't mean we shouldn't revisit what it is practical to do to increase our transparency as an organisation and confirm our commitment to consultation. So I think it is appropriate to refer rather than simply vote down this motion.
Thank you, councillor Ernie. We have four more members who wish to speak and just under 11 minutes, five members now. 12 minutes left. So councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome the opportunity to have further discussion in the Audit and Governance Committee on the implementation of measures which this motion seeks to implement. I would be concerned if this amendment, in whatever words it was finally couched in, did not accept the principles that I intended with the motion. I don't think anyone can object to the first element, that we are seeking to be open and transparent of consulting with both councillors and the public on the major decisions. I don't think anyone should object to the implementation of the recommendation about sharing decision papers which were exempt when they're no longer qualified as exempt. I don't think those are contentious suggestions. And I think that the implementation of a third element may require some further discussion. And if it is a referral of that element, I was more than happy to accept the amendment because it is only those council decisions or cabinet decisions that are supported by these discussions that should be recorded and shared. So if there are discussions which happen down the pub, which then lead to significant project expenditure, I think we ought to be recording those, whether it's on beer mats or not. But if it's about whether or not we're going to make sure that somebody's waste bin's been collected and you're just sorting out some casework in the pub, then that's not a decision that needs to be recorded and wouldn't be in under any circumstances. But if the amendment refers to just that third element, so I'm quite certain we do not want any more NDAs, then I think we should ask the Audit and Governance Committee to seek how that proposal can be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Godfrey. Councillor Todd.
Very much indeed, Madam Mayor. I have a lot of sympathy with what's being said by the proposers of this motion, the intent of what they're going after. I think my concern is the practicalities because what you've got is something here that lays out some very specific measures where I'm going, hang on, can somebody have a look at this and make sure this is the right thing to do, that we're not breaking the law, that we're not going to cause problems? So, you know, even the first one, properly consulting, what do you mean by properly in this particular case? Do we need to define that in more useful terms? We actually know what guidance we're giving to officers and Cabinet in terms of how things should run. The second one about taking papers out of exempt, I'm as keen as anybody else to take papers out of exempt when it's possible to do so. But full council, is that really the right place for us to be reviewing whether papers should stay exempt or not, bearing in mind that in order to discuss the paper, we'll have to go into exempt because we'll have to look at the paper to decide in exempt terms whether it's, I mean, it just feels like it's not quite thought through. The intent is, I have a lot of sympathy for, absolutely, let's get those papers out of exempt, publish on the website as soon as we can. But let's just have a process that works. And I don't see a process here in this motion that works, which is why I think sending it to Audit and Governance to look at it. The third one, what you started to talk about in your point was to say it's certain decisions and certain meetings. And that's what you effectively said, councillor Godfrey. And I agree with you on that. I think it would be good actually to have more clarity about what we published, you know, we should maybe, we get into the habit of just automatically, I don't know, send around the minutes of Project Integra, they're not super secret for those of you who are into such things so that you know what's coming on waste. Why not? I don't have a problem with that. But again, every decision... But again, every decision, you know, I'm talking to colleagues in a market town about a potential bin store that we're looking at in a car park. Well, I mean, that is going to be a key decision, there'll probably be a paper on that. I mean, that would mean that those ward members need to be recording their discussions and decisions. The point for me here is, let's put it into the decision-making protocol, let's know which kind of decisions we're talking about, what kind of meetings we're talking about, rather than trying to capture absolutely everything, you know, should we be, dare I say it, in the light of the last few days, be putting emails and WhatsApp messages in there as well? And similarly, on the NDA point, I have a lot of sympathy for this, but I'm at a council where I just don't get to see papers. So there are papers, papers of decisions at Hampshire. If you're not on a particular committee or in a particular place, you just don't see them, ever. So there's a watch out here, because there are alternative methods of managing confidential papers, and they're worse, which would just mean that as a backbench councillor, you just don't see things. I have a lot of sympathy for not wanting NDAs and things like that, but I'd also want reassurance, and again, this is why I'd like Audit and Governance, that it doesn't lead to actually some things that are currently shared just not being shared in the future, because I am on a council where that happens, and I don't see papers that, for example, Jan would see, or that you would see. I mean, that's not a good example, actually, because I'm an opposition spokesperson to Jan, so I probably would see the papers that councillor Warwick would see. But the point is that there are other, there are other things going on other committees where I just wouldn't see things. So there's a bit of me that says be careful what you wish for. In other words, I have a lot of sympathy with the intent for this. I'm on the side of openness, I'm on the side of clarity, accountability, transparency, every time, you will find me on that side of the argument. All I'm asking for here, and I think the amendment does this really well, is that we refer it to the relevant committee, they have a proper look at it. I'm hearing that the intent, the direction of travel, there's probably pretty, there's consensus, but this is not yet written in a form with the thought-through nature, where I would be happy to sign it off in its current form, and that's why I think it needs a referral. Thank you very much.
Councillor Lumby, you have four and a half minutes left.
Thank you, Chair. Those were, Madam Mayor, I went, used the full four and a half minutes getting your name right. This NDA is, look, we have a mess right now, and we really do need to get on and sort it out. First of all, just go back one back, paragraph 4.1e of our Code of Conduct.
Microphone, councillor.
Paragraph 4.1e of our Code of Conduct says we are to keep confidential information confidential. So we are already under an obligation, and we face sanctions if we breach that. So in normal course, we are already obliged to keep stuff confidential, therefore why are NDAs being provided? But more importantly, why do they contain this invidious indemnity? Councillor Lerni slightly dismissive of them, probably because you didn't have to sign one. The indemnity, let's be clear, it says basically that you are liable for any loss the council suffers, way beyond normal economically foreseeable losses, the lot. Secondly, because of the way that indemnity law works, you don't have to mitigate, and thirdly, you don't even have to evidence the loss you've incurred. So you just get a bill for it. Now, that is really intimidating and unpleasant, and we shouldn't be doing it. Now, let's look what happened on CWR, sorry, I'm a bit pressed, there's something. Cabinet didn't give them, 12 members signed up for the nasty NDA. Two of us objected and got modified forms, and no one else was allowed to see it. They couldn't carry out their democratic scrutiny. Then, we changed the plan, everyone could see it, but those indemnities haven't been released, they're still in place. So all those people, those 12, I don't know who you are, but you're not me, and you're not Cabinet, have all got that liability. That's really bad, and we should be sorting that out now, and we should be committing to not do this again, because it's unpleasant, it's intimidating, and it's anti-democratic. And therefore, it's a really serious point that we shouldn't be brushing under the carpet, putting on long grass, we really need to face up to this as a matter of urgency. Sorry, I hope that's clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Williams.
As a current teacher, I would say that perhaps the role has changed a little bit, Frank. As a teacher now, my job is ruled by admin, recording almost everything I do, everything I say, every kind of serious conversation, or even just general ones. It has become a job that is a real burden with admin, because it is that idea that everything must be recorded, everything must be there, partly to protect your own back, and so you have a record of what is happening. So we do think we have to have that thing of being careful of what you wish for. For me, looking at this, I think we need to make changes. Being transparent is important as a council, but that point three really does concern me. The burden for me of having to record almost everything I do, every conversation I'm having, any meeting, becomes so onerous that it really does become difficult. The hardest part of my job as a teacher is admin, and I just think we do need to be careful, we need to have a discussion so we get this right. Once we vote on something in council, it's done, and actually, with things like this that actually matter, that make us a better, more transparent council, isn't it worth spending a little bit of time getting it right, rather than going in, voting now, and then saying, oh, actually, that's not good, we need to repick that, undo that, that doesn't work, and actually makes the council's jobs and officers' jobs much more difficult? That's why I think we need to take this to Audit and Governance, get them to look at it, get them to actually come up with something that works for us as a council and councillors and as officers, and isn't too onerous.
Thank you, councillors and Williams. Councillor Clea, you've got two seconds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All I was going to say was, I will not dismiss this out of hand, I will not vote it down, but I do think there may be some legal points here that need to be looked into, so all I'm going to say is, please, can we agree to take it to audit and let them have a jolly good look at it, because I think it's very important, and I agree with lots that has been said this evening. Please go to audit, let's go through it, and then take it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clea. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, councillor Williams, councillor Todd, and councillor Lerni, and councillor Clea have all really set out our position. I think it just needs, it just needs a bit more work to define what those conversations are and which ones we should be recording, and therefore, I'm in favour of it going off to Audit and Governance. Thank you.
Members, we're now going to have a vote on whether we should send this back to, on the motion to send this back to the Audit and Governance Committee. Oh, sorry. Councillor Godfrey. Sorry, say it again. Okay, thank you. So, members.
Madam Mayor, shall I just try and assist with the phrasing of the amendment that's on the floor at the moment, please? So in, the councillor Cutler has put on the floor that this council, new words, asks the Audit and Governance Committee to review, new words, that the council commits to clearly demonstrate that it is open and transparent, et cetera, et cetera, four bullet points, and then new words, and that in their considerations, Audit and Governance review the legality of these specific proposals. Thank you. Councillor Cutler, does that reflect the... And that in their consideration, Audit and Governance review the legality and practicality of these specific proposals, and they're the four referenced in the bullet points, councillor Godfrey.
The amendment's being put to the ballot, madam.
So, members, we are now voting on the amendment that's just been read out. Can I see a show of hands? Hall, did you want to say something?
Madam Mayor, yes, I was just going to ask the chief executive to repeat that wording, please, and also whether there was any recognition of the rescinding of the NDA indemnity in the short term, which seems to be troubling people.
Right, thank you. Leader, I mean, sorry.
No, councillor Cutler's motion that is on the floor is that this council asks Audit and Governance to review that the council commits to, and that covers all four bullet points as listed on councillor Godfrey's motion here this evening, with the addition line, and that in their considerations, Audit and Governance review the legality and practicality of those specific proposals. Are we okay?
Sorry, we have a technical issue.
So, no, councillor Hall.
Can I see a show of hands for all of those in favour of the amendment? All those against? And any abstentions? So that's clearly carried. Mrs Kirkman, was you just, I'm getting tired.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So that was a vote on the amendment that's been carried, we now need to revert to the substantive motion. It is exactly the same, because we've just read out that motion, but we do need to move to substantive and get your agreement or otherwise on the substantive motion, members.
Members, is that agreed? Thank you, members. Members, the next item of business this evening, or this morning, is agenda item number seven, changes to committee membership. Mrs Kirkman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been notified of the following changes to membership of committees. For the scrutiny committee, councillor Creymerson is to replace councillor Williams as a full member of the committee, and councillor Rutter is to replace him as a deputy. For the licensing and regulation committee, councillor Evans is to replace councillor Williams. For the health and environment committee, councillor Fern is to replace councillor Williams as a full member of the committee, and councillor Laming is to replace him as a deputy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number nine is a question from members of the council.
Councillor Reed. Madam Chair, in the light of the hour, could we not take this item as read? And obviously, any secondary questions can come up at a later date. We're not going to get sensibility out of people at one o'clock in the morning.
Do you have a second, or are we all agreed? Okay, is that all agreed? Thank you, members. So, members, that finishes the conclusion for our business. Sorry, members, just two minutes, please, hold on.
Sorry, for completeness, members, clearly, agenda item nine is exempt business, but Madam Mayor was very clear with you earlier whether you wished to move into exempt to consider the matters within the CWR papers, and you indicated more than twice that you did not, so this evening, we move on past that agenda item, there is no exempt business. Thank you.
Thank you, members. You're welcome to now join me and Abby Hells, should you wish to do so.